Good evening, everyone. My name is Anthony Torrios and I am the Chair of the Planning Commission. Welcome to this Planning Commission meeting. Please remember to turn off your cellphones. The parking validation machine for the garage under City Hall is located at the rear of the chambers. Following roll call during the summary of hearing procedures, we will review how the public may provide comment during today's session. At this time, if you're able, please join me in rising for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will now move on to roll call. Vice Chair Cantrell.
Here.
Commissioner Barocchio.
Here.
Commissioner Bendal.
Here.
Commissioner Bigford.
Here.
Commissioner Lardinois.
Here.
Commissioner Oliverio. Commissioner Rosario. Commissioner Young.
Here.
Myself, here. So that's seven in attendance, two absences, so we have quorum. Okay, we will now move on to summary of hearing procedures. If you want to address the commission, please fill out a speaker card located on the table near the audiovisual technician and deposit the completed card in the basket. There are also speaker cards in the back of the chambers and at the side entrance. The procedures for this hearing are as follows. After the staff's presentation, applicants and/or repellents may make up to a five-minute presentation. During the public comment period, the Chair will call out the names on the submitted speaker cards in the order received for those members of the public who attend in person. As your name is called, line up in front of the microphone at the front of the chamber. Generally, each speaker will be given up to two minutes for public testimony and speakers using a translator will have up to four minutes. At the discretion of the Chair, the time allotted to each speaker may be changed depending on the number of items on the agenda, number of speakers, and other factors. Speakers using a translator will have double the time allotted. After the public testimony, the applicant and/or repellent may make closing remarks for up to an additional five minutes. Planning Commissioners may ask questions of the speakers. Response to Commissioner questions do not reduce the speaker's time allowance. The public hearing will then be closed and the Planning Commission will take action on the item. The Planning Commission may request staff to respond to public testimony, ask staff questions, and discuss the item. If you challenge these land use decisions in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at this public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. The Planning Commission's action on rezonings, pre-zonings, general plan amendments, and code amendments is only advisory to the City Council. The City Council will hold public hearing on these items. Section 20.120.400 of the municipal code provides the procedures for legal protest to the City Council on rezonings and pre-zonings. The Planning Commission's actions on conditional use permits is appealable to the City Council in accordance with Section 20.100.220 of the municipal code. Agendas and all staff reports for this meeting may be accessed on the city's website. Okay, we'll move on to call to order and orders of the day. Before we begin, I want to remind Planning Commission members and members of the public to follow our Code of Conduct at meetings. This includes commenting on the specific agenda item only and addressing the full body. Public speakers will not engage in a conversation with the commissioners or staff. All members of the Planning Commission, staff, and the public are expected to refrain from abusive language. Repeated failure to comply with the Code of Conduct, which will disturb, disrupt, or impede the orderly conduct of this meeting may result in removal from the meeting. This meeting of the Planning Commission will now come to order. All right, first up on the agenda is public comment. This is the time for public comment to the Planning Commission on non-agendized items. Please fill out a speaker's card and give it to the technician. Each member of the public may address the commission for up to two minutes. The commission cannot take any formal action without the item being properly noticed and placed on an agenda. In response to public comment, the Planning Commission is limited to the following options: responding to statements made or questions posed by members of the public, or requesting staff to report back on a matter at a subsequent meeting, or directing staff to place the item on a future agenda. Do we have any members of the public who would like to speak on non-agendized items? Okay, not seeing anyone move forward, so we will move on to deferrals and removals from the calendar. Any items scheduled for hearing this evening for which deferral is being requested will be taken out of order to be heard first on the matter of deferral or removal. Staff will provide an update on the items for which deferral or removal is being requested. If you want to change any of the deferral dates recommended or speak to the question of deferring or removing these or any other items, you should say so at this time. And we have two items noticed for deferral today. Item A is GP18-012PDC23-009 and ER23-056, which relates to a city-initiated general plan amendment. And item B is Burbank 45C21-034, GP23-001, H23-005, T23-003, and ER23-026, all related to annexation of some properties and a related site development permit. Staff, do we have any commentary on these deferrals or any other items to defer today?
No, we have no additional comments.
I move to adopt the deferrals as recommended by staff.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Lardinois to approve deferring these items with a second from Vice Chair Cantrell. If there's no further discussion, we will move on to a vote. Vice Chair Cantrell.
Yes.
Commissioner Barocchio.
Yes.
Commissioner Bendal.
Yes.
Commissioner Bigford.
Yes.
Commissioner Lardinois.
Yes.
Commissioner Oliverio is absent. Oh, Commissioner Oliverio has joined us. Okay. Commissioner Rosario is also absent. Commissioner Young.
Yes.
Myself, yes. That's seven yes, two absences, and zero no, so the motion passes. All right, we will now move on to tonight's consent calendar. Notice to the public, there will be no separate discussion of individual consent calendar items as they are considered to be routine and will be adopted by one motion. If a member of the commission requests debate, separate vote, or recusal on a particular item, that item may be removed from the consent calendar by the Chair and considered separately. The public may comment on the entire consent calendar and any items removed from the consent calendar by the Chair. Staff will provide an update on the consent calendar. If you wish to speak on one of these items individually, please come down to the podium at this time. And on the consent calendar this evening, we have four items. Item A is review and approval of the minutes from our December 4th meeting. Item B is CP24-020 and ER24-131, which is a conditional use permit to allow construction of an 85-foot-high lattice tower at 2268 Will Drive. Item C is CP24-022 and ER24-159, a conditional use permit to allow construction of an 85-foot lattice tower at 12329 Mayberry Road. And item D is CP24-027 and ER24-192, which is a conditional use permit and determination of public convenience or necessity to allow the off-sale of beer and wine within an existing 14,000-square-foot grocery store located at 1915 West San Carlo Street. Do we have any members of the public who would like to speak on any of these items? Okay, feel free to come down to the podium. Actually, sorry, which item would you like to speak on? Which item are you looking to speak on?
Construction of the tower.
Sorry, which of the two towers?
It is CP24-022.
Okay. Perfect. So we will pull item C from the consent calendar. Are there any other public comments on any items on the consent calendar?
I move to adopt the remainder of the consent calendar.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Lardinois with a second from Commissioner Oliverio to approve the remainder of the consent calendar. If there's no further discussion, we will move on to a vote. Vice Chair Cantrell.
Yes.
Commissioner Barocchio.
Yes.
Commissioner Bendal.
Yes.
Commissioner Bigford.
Yes.
Commissioner Lardinois.
Yes.
Commissioner Oliverio.
Yes.
Commissioner Rosario is absent. Commissioner Young.
Yes.
And myself, yes. That's eight yes, one absence, zero no, so the motion passes. Okay, we will now move on to here, item 4C, the second of the two 85-foot-tall lattice towers, this one at 12329 Mayberry Road. Staff, do we have a presentation for this item?
Yes, we do. Thank you. Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, and Commissioners. My name is Rena Shah, Project Manager with the Planning Division. This project consists of a conditional use permit to allow the construction of a utility facility, including an approximately 85-foot-high lattice tower with an antenna used for remote water meter data collection. The project also includes the construction of a six-foot-high solar panel and related ground equipment. The lattice tower and antenna will be part of a private communications network operated by San Jose Water Company for remote reading of water meters. The triangular-shaped lot, as you can see on the screen, is bounded by Penintenxia Creek to the north, residential development to the east, multifamily residential development to the far west, and single-family residences to the south, accessed only from Mayberry Road. The site is accessed via a 20-foot-wide access driveway from Mayberry Road. The project is consistent with site's general plan, land use designation of public quasi-public as it will supplement the site's existing utility use. The project is also consistent with PQP, Public Quasi-Public zoning district's development standards, including setbacks. And the project meets the criteria for allowing a maximum height of up to 150 feet as described in the staff report. The tower would be screened to the extent possible by existing mature trees and chain-link fences which have vertical slats. The tower is set back approximately 150 feet from the closest residential property line, which is shared with this parcel to the east. The 85-foot height of the tower is necessary to allow more customers to be reached by the network. And it will also reduce the number of towers that need to be constructed throughout the city. The project, its census water meter uses a radio band to transmit at 1.9 million watts where the FCC maximum transmit power permitted is 25 million watts. So that's 92% less than the FCC maximum. And this is required to adhere, and the project will be required to follow the radio frequency safety criteria established by FCC or Federal Communications Commission. The project is categorically exempt pursuant to CEQA Section 15303 for new construction or conversion of small structures. Staff also followed Council Policy 6-30 for public outreach. An onsite sign has been posted on the property since August 7, 2024, and staff has been available to answer questions from the public. One resident objected to the tower stating potential structural failure, potential lighting strikes, RF emissions, and other miscellaneous hazards. The applicant responded to them, to him, responded and stated that the well site has been in existence since 1960s prior to the construction of the surrounding development in the 1980s. Building permits to the building department will be submitted to ensure that the structure will be soundly built. The tower is set back 115 feet now from the earlier plans that showed 100 feet from the shared property line to the east. The lattice structure is also semi-transparent in appearance and it will be visually less impactful to the surrounding neighborhood. Similar permits have been approved by the commission in the past, in the last year, in different areas of the city, and this is something that technology is demanding. Staff therefore recommends that the Planning Commission approve the conditional use permit. And this concludes my staff's presentation. The applicant is here to answer any questions, if you may. Scott Hoffman.
Thank you, staff. We'll now turn it over to the project applicant. You'll have five minutes for a presentation.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Scott Hoffman. For the applicant, I work in the Engineering Department, San Jose Water. This antenna is part of, over 15 different antennas spread throughout Santa Clara County. And it's so that we can read water meters remotely and provide real-time data on usage, and we can notify people when there's a leak. The sighting and the height was based on a propagation study, and that's the reason they're spread out. If we lower the height of the antenna, we're going to need more of them. So this was the balance that we had, and we're building them throughout the county. We have one in Los Gatos, one in Santa Clara County, one in Saratoga, and multiple in the city of San Jose. It's a great project. I think it will be a great benefit for the community. As Rena said, you know, this site, it's a pretty large site. It's a well site. It was a well site in the past. We had wells there. We retired the wells. We do have plans to put more wells in, so there's more coming. You know, a well site's a really great passive neighbor. You know, you're talking maybe one truck a day, you know, the traffic impact. I don't think there's a lot of noise. And we've did the best we could to set the antenna at 150. We did propose originally 100 feet. Now we're at 150. I think that's a pretty good safe distance. I know, you know, if it fell over, we're still 65 feet from the property line. You know, that's what I could say. Can I answer any of your questions?
We will come back to the commission with questions in a little bit, but first we'll go to public comment, and then you will have an additional five minutes to address any public comment.
Okay.
Okay, at this time, we will open the floor to any public comment. So any members of the public who would like to speak on this item, feel free to come down to the podium at this time. If you could just state your name for the record, and then you'll have two minutes.
Hi, my name is Nathan Valentine. I live in one of the houses around that area. There are like plenty of houses and few housing communities around the plot where this 85-foot-tower antenna is going to be constructed. And construction of this antenna poses different kinds of threats to the housing community in that area. During the construction, there are a lot of safety hazards like dust and all those kind of things coming into the air and creating threats for different kinds of diseases to the people living in that area. And construction of such a huge tower can cause, can attract lightning hazards. And if there are any accidental damages because of such a tower, that is again a big threat to the houses around in that area. And that kind of a huge tower can impact the the look and visibility of the current of the landscape in that area. It can cause devaluation to the homes in that area. And so because of this, I humbly request you to like block the construction of the tower.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public who'd like to speak on this item, feel free to come down and line up behind the podium at this time.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jivana Meri. I'm also one of the residents in the Creecland Circle community. Yeah, first of all, thank you, everyone, for listening to our concerns before going ahead with this. I really appreciate that. So, so as you can see in the previous slide, it was complete, it is like amidst a lot of communities of homes where this new construction is going to happen. It's covered with homes in all three directions. It's a triangle, and as you can see in the slide. So it's amidst a lot of homes, multi-story homes, multi, a lot of buildings. So I would like to give a little bit context on where we are coming from. So there was another construction in this area maybe last year, and there were a lot of dust, and we could really get a feel of how it would look in the future. So there was a lot of dust, and we have some plants in our backyard. I mean, it didn't recover from that, all of that dust, so I don't want that to happen again. We have some medicinal plants. It's not working, and I had to really cut it off, and it's not at all working. So all the dust, construction, it will be definitely an impact to all the communities living close by. So let's consider the size of this thing, 89 foot, close to eight-story building. So just think about it, an eight-story building coming on your backyard. It will definitely change the skyline, the skyline that you are going to see, the landscape of the land, and it will severely impact the price of the land. And I see that as a major concern. Our land property value will reduce immensely. Thank you for listening to me. I seriously believe, I hope that you'll consider all of our concerns and address this problem and hopefully block this construction. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'll make a final call for any members of the public who would like to come down and speak on this item. Okay, I'm not seeing anyone move forward. In that case, we will turn it back over to the project applicant. You'll have an additional five minutes to address any additional concerns raised.
This is an important project for us. If we don't build it in this location, we'll have to find another location. And there just, there aren't that many sites where you can maintain 150-foot setback from residential. I don't know where it would be. It complicates things if we can't build it here. It is a well site. We did drill wells out there recently because we're trying to drill some more wells, and wells don't last forever. That's what, it was previously a well site. Those wells were retired. We put some more wells in. There'll be more infrastructure coming. We have plans to put some solar in. Yes, it'll be a little bit of disruption, but I think, you know, if we sold the property to a developer, I think you'd see the same impacts during construction, if not more so. I think we're just a fantastic neighbor. You know, if we get reg, if we get scared or pushed out of the area, then something else will come. It's not going to stay vacant forever. So we're trying to do the right thing. We want to serve our customers and have a system where, you know, we can, you know, we can let people know if they have a leak, and we can let people know real-time what their bill is and their usage. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. With that, we will turn it back over to the commission for discussion. First up is Vice Chair Cantrell.
I have a question for staff and potentially for the applicant. During the construction process, the dust mitigation, I assume, you know, offense, you guys are probably not short on water. You could probably spray the area during construction to keep dust out. Is that part of the process?
That's correct. We do have environmental conditions. It's in your resolution, number, condition number 23, which are standard environmental permit conditions for construction-related air quality and what has to be done, how to mitigate those. So those are strictly, those will be strictly followed.
Okay, thank you.
Over to Commissioner Barocchio.
Perfect, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year. Question on the placement. I know that real close to that area is the BART flea market hub, and I wonder, is that a potential site? Because I know there's no residents, and I wonder if that's more congruent to what you're trying to do to that sort of area where there's transit, there's more industrial-looking things there. I wonder if that was considered or potentially could be moved there?
You know, we looked at our own sites. As you know, real estate's pretty pricey to go out and try to purchase something or lease something. All of our antennas are on our own properties. We didn't, we're not placing it on other people's buildings. We placed some on tanks, some were antennas. If we didn't have a tank or something to place it on, there'd be an antenna. But no, we didn't look at other locations. There would have to be a propagation study to see how that would work, you know, what that height would be, would we, could, would it suffice? You know, so that's, hopefully that answered your question.
Yes, thank you. So this is, sorry. San Jose Water. Is there any partnership out there that has, has been struck between San Jose Water and either a company or VTA or Caltrans where a tower of this nature has been put?
No, we haven't reached out to other agencies. I don't, I don't, I have a feeling that wouldn't go very easily. It'd probably be a difficult process. You know, some people suggest putting it on cell towers. That's a safety hazard. This is a radio network. It's not cellular. So that wouldn't work. And the way the, way the radio network works, I understand it wouldn't work on a cell tower, so that's not an option.
Okay. And my last question, is a tower the only way to get the meters read? Or is there other, other technology out there?
Well, we're trying to do it by radio. We have red meters by driving around. But, you know, that's, that has impacts too. You know, there's pollution and traffic impacts. But no, this, I don't, I don't understand. There is, there is no other option to read the meters without a radio network. And this will, actually, the other benefit is we're not going to have meter readers all the time, too. So that's taking people off the streets, those impacts. So there's some, there's some benefits. And then like I said, you know, the ability to see your wireless in real-time, be logging is pretty important.
Right on. Thank you. Those are all my questions.
Thank you. I had one quick question for staff. A member of the public raised, you know, concerns around lightning risk, wildfire risk. Curious if staff could just provide a brief overview of how those sorts of risks are evaluated for a project like this?
So, thank you, Chair. So typically, we are not at that stage to evaluate lighting strikes, et cetera. We depend on Building Division and Building Department to make it, make sure that it's going to be a sound structure, and it's not going to fall off or anything like that, because that's how planning works. So, thank you.
I would say the other thing to consider here is because there's a lot of underground utilities and a lot of underground equipment, there's very little chance to put any type of vegetation on this site as well. So it's, we're quite limited there as well in terms of fire risk, excuse me, in terms of fire risk.
Thank you. Let's go over to Commissioner Bigford.
Thank you, Chair. This question is for the gentleman from San Jose Water. You said you had others of these towers. Can you tell us something about how many have been installed? How many are going to be? What the height of those are, the propagation area? What is this in the overall project?
We've constructed one. Well, we've constructed one lattice tower. We've constructed several antennas on top of tanks, I think six, mostly in the Los Gatos mountain area, so they're higher elevation. We are permitting a total of nine antennas. Six of those are in the city of San Jose. One is in the town of Los Gatos. One was in Saratoga, and one is county unincorporated. So far, we've received several conditional use permits, but we have not received building permits. We've applied, we've only received one, we received one building permit in the city of Saratoga, and we built one antenna tower. But everything else is in process.
Was that one that you built the same height as this one?
That one, I believe that was 85. Most of them in, down in the valley are 85. If they're kind of in the foothills, they might be shorter, 45, if there's, if there is an elevation difference. I don't believe we have any that are over 85, but generally they're 85 feet.
There's a, so we've approved 123 in the last, in this past year. And the tallest one was 90 feet. So there's one, one over 85.
Okay, I don't see any other requests to speak. Are there any other questions or comments from Commissioners or a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve the staff recommendation from Commissioner Oliverio with a second from Commissioner Young. If there's no further discussion, we will move on to a vote. Vice Chair Cantrell.
Yes.
Commissioner Barocchio.
No.
Commissioner Bendal.
Yes.
Commissioner Bigford.
Yes.
Commissioner Lardinois had to step out. Commissioner Oliverio.
Yes.
Commissioner Rosario is absent. Commissioner Young.
Yes.
Myself, yes. That's six yes, one no, and two absences, so the motion passes. All right, that brings us to the end of tonight's consent calendar. We do not have any items scheduled for public hearing, so we will move directly to referrals from City Council, boards, commissions, or other agencies. Staff, do we have any referrals?
No, we do not.
All right, then we will move on to good and welfare. Do we have a report from City Council?
Yes, thank you, Chair. We actually had two City Council meetings after the Planning Commission last met. There was a number of items that the department brought forward, some of which were seen by the Planning Commission. So on, excuse me, December 10th, we brought forward the annual report on the general plan, as well as just a conforming rezoning. There was also passed at that point a growth area incentive for multifamily housing development, which it’ll be interesting to see how that helps spur additional housing production throughout the city. And then also, we did the Paseo de Saratoga project that the Planning Commission saw, which all of those were approved by City Council. On the 17th, so the last-minute rush to get things done by the end of the year, we brought a number of other items, we had a number of SB 1333 rezonings which are going on throughout the city, a conforming rezoning that was just relatively straightforward, as well as two items the commission had seen, the NBD overlay ordinance for residential overlays in three of our NBDs, and then the ministerial approval ordinance, which again, the commission saw. All of those items were approved by the City Council.
Thank you. Anything on subcommittee formation reports and outstanding business?
No.
Or commission calendar and study sessions?
Nothing.
Okay, then as always, we will end with any questions or comments for the public record. All right, I’m not seeing any hands, so that brings us to the end of tonight’s agenda. We are adjourning at 7:01 PM. Thank you, everyone.